Okay, it is six oh three, I'm officially calling this meeting order. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence where we remain standing. A pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now please a moment of silence as we think about those who've come before us. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, roll call please.
Okay, roll call, um trustee Alter.
Here.
Trustee Decker.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley, he's coming right?
He's coming.
Yep.
Yes.
Uh trustee Sauer.
Yep.
And trustee Shudy is coming too.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
And Mayor Allen.
I am present. Can I have actually copy of the reports, let me get a second.
Yes.
Uh for everybody who doesn't have one, there's agendas here, um in case you need one. Uh first thing we have tonight, as we noticed uh at the previous special meeting a couple of weeks back, is we have a public hearing, uh this is regarding proposed local law number five, a local law creating a loading and unload zoning in a vill- uh zone in Village Huesick Falls, so I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move.
I'll give that to Bobby Decker and Doug second. Uh so we are officially in a public hearing, I'm gonna put up the uh proposed law up on the screen here. Technically I'm putting up the resolution, but the resolution has a local law in it, so. Um and for those of you who haven't seen local laws passed before, the way our village does it is we um have a local law that's worked on through the committee and reviewed by our village attorney when it's been. Um we introduce it at a meeting, we set a public hearing and make it available on the website in the village office. After we go through the public hearing, the board has the option to pass it, table it, or not act on it. Ouchie. So uh this local law is a pretty simple one, it basically is just setting a zone um for thirty, thirty minutes loading and unloading around the corner of Huesick Provisions. We've defined it as the northern side of Lower John Street, meaning crosswalk at the easternmost end of Lower John and running west at seventy-five feet down Lower John Streets. So, would anyone like to speak to the board regarding this local law?
I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, the local business person came to us and said we'd like to have this, it would make sense and
Absolutely.
village will has the ability to make laws like this, so we ran it through, we're looking good. So we'll keep the public hearing open for a bit in case anybody shows up later and wants to discuss it. Board, any comments, any discussion points? In that case, we'll leave the public hearing open and we will move on. So, um announcements and correspondence, Jenny Scarpula, did I say that right?
Uh-huh.
Awesome. Welcome Jenny, is here to speak to the board, um and I I put it wrong on the uh the agenda, I missed a sentence, but she's gonna speak uh about two things, one, a uh the request for a second cannabis grower showcase event, this is at the Wood Park. Uh and trustees, you guys have the draft letter that we're looking to authorize me to sign tonight. Uh and secondly, about the possibility of a repeating event at their smoke shop at fourteen John Street. So Jenny, pass it off to you to talk to the board a little bit about what we spoke about, about how that event would work.
Sure, so um as probably all of you know, we had a cannabis grower showcase um at the Wood Park for the summer concert series. And what a cannabis grower showcase is, is it's a way for um New York State to allow farmers to sell their product by teaming up with um other farms and a dispensary owner. And the reason they're doing this is because um they let farmers have their cannabis growing license last year, but and they had promised to have two hundred dispensaries open by this time this year, and right now there's twenty-one or twenty-two-ish because of, you know, various lawsuits and and just other logistics. So this is a way to let farmers um sell their product. So um what I've heard from Mayor Allen and others is that there was no negative feedback at our last um event and it was a, um we had a steady show and it was good for us. Um the other good thing is that four percent um tax goes straight to the village, um so that's awesome. So one thing we're proposing is to have another cannabis grower showcase at the Walter A. Wood Festival on October seventh. And I spoke with Mayor Allen about this and I guess you guys have the letter for that, it would look very similar um probably exact to the last one um that we had at um the park. And then the second thing that I would like to propose is um a recurring event. The Office of Cannabis Management um allows us to have recurring events and they allow us to have um events in brick-and-mortar stores. So what we would like to propose is that a recurring event, they let you operate for thirteen days, take one day off and then repeat until December thirty-first. Um and we'd like to do that in our smoke shop on John Street. We would partner with other farms, so there would be other farms' um products there. And the farmers may or may not be there, we may act as their agent and sell their product for them. Um we would have a dispensary owner on hand at all times. Um the application process is pretty grievous, we have to submit a site plan, um proposed security of how the products would be sold, security on how um the sales would be safe, as in, you know, everybody's IDed and crowd management, if there is such a thing, or, you know, things like that. So the state has to approve all of that before they'll let us go ahead with it. And part of the application process is of course to get um approval from you.
So before we speak about that first, I think the easier one is the letter, which I actually have listed as the first item of new business, which I'll move to that slide real fast. Um as I, as I spoke to Jenny on the phone, this is exactly the same format of letter from the previous one that we'd approved for the first event. Uh I adjusted the, and updated the location, the time, the name of the location, the associated event, and I added a sentence at the second last paragraph that said, it should be noted that this would be the second such showcase as the first showcase went off with no issues and positive feedback from the community. Um which it was, I mean we, there was a lot of concern we had about just making sure people on the street can't consume in the park and that information got out there and there were no issues. Um and I know that the, the police were there at the event, as they would be at any event, they were on top of that as well and knew what the board's concerns were, so all in all, it was a very successful thing. And I think that from our point of view, um it's been equally great and frustrating to see New York State moving in this direction, but also kind of tripping over themselves with all of the regulations and missing deadlines and it's kind of fallen um negatively on you guys who've been doing a lot of the work. So we're uh as a board, I think glad to do this. So with that in mind, looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign and send a letter to New York State Office of Cannabis Management in support of helping buds and this will be specific to the October seventh Wood Park event for the Walter A. Wood Tractor and Iron Culture Show.
I'll move.
Thank you Bobby Decker.
I'll move second.
Thank you Deb, any further discussion? It's too bad Ca- uh Kevin and Dan aren't here, 'cause they would also vote for it, but that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed or extensions? All right, carries. Uh now, secondly, uh regarding the opening of, of the location and the repeating location and the, the weird regulations about right now, it's only a possibility through the end of the calendar year.
Correct.
Um Elena, this is one where I, I kind of figured we would defer to you. I know you have probably tons of documents that you've already prepared that we would need to review.
Yeah, all the regulations and free to ask questions guidelines.
From our point of view, I just wanna make sure that we're doing everything in compliance with what has to be. The question I had was kind of security related, but you answered those questions. Do you guys have any questions, or Elena, do you have any questions for? About how this would work in the, in the shop, thirteen, fourteen days every two weeks?
Nope, farmers gotta get rid of their product, put a lot of money into this.
There's at least we could do.
Yeah.
And I have a que- I have a question, so.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen at the end of the day, is the products stay in the shop at night, or is it removed every day?
Yeah, so we have to come up with a security plan um of where the product would be stored. And we either have to um come up with a plan to make the shop secure, beef up the security, but it has to be in a locked um cabinet or something. For example, in Scanderville, Old Saratoga Mercantile, they're doing this repeating event and they store all of the product in their back storeroom in locked cabinets. So it's, I think that would be easier than moving it back and forth to our farm. We could always store it in the containers behind, you know, we have an eight-foot fence with cardboard on the top and all the containers are locked, um and we may do that, it depends on what OCM, OCM thinks works.
So it would be up to them to approve the plan that you come up with, okay?
Correct.
Yes.
Justin, they have a special for the word.
All we have to do is say, we're all for it, the state says, well, they're all for it and you meet all the other standards and you're good enough.
Right, right.
Yeah. The letter we just addressed, I added a, the word says in like the, the way, no issues and positive feedback, so I wanted to stress that with.
It's okay.
But no positive feedback.
Thank you so much. I wanted, I wanted to note that the um OCM had a meeting uh Tuesday um and it was just to go over some new guidelines. Um and it ended up to be a four-and-a-half hour meeting with all the public commentary because there were a lot of farmers there and it, it was pretty heartbreaking. I wasn't able to go because I was on rescue squad on Tuesdays, but um one of my partners went and there was farmers, multiple farmers that are saying that they have been contemplating suicide because they put so much into this.
Oh, I understand.
And it's, it's heart-wrenching, you know, it doesn't matter what the product is. These, all of the farmers have put in work, time, money.
It's a huge investment.
And there's nowhere to sell, you know, so um this.
You can only sell in New York, right? You can't sell in other states.
Right, and this allows us to partner with multiple farmers to put their product in our store so that we can, you know, help everybody out.
I'm all for it.
Absolutely.
It seems simple.
So I, I guess my recommendation would be to make sure we have the documents and we'll just kind of communicate back and forth through email and either at next week's special meeting or the regular October meeting, we can have things prepared to approve that? Does that work?
It almost seems like, it almost seems like, well, we approve it, but the state is doing a very thorough,
Yeah, can we approve this?
I mean, I almost think we could approve it now because we're not gonna.
Subject to the state's approval.
Right.
It's not the, what's that?
I was gonna say, I'm comfortable doing an approval or a motion to approve conditioned on providing documentation that it was approved by OCM.
Okay.
Okay.
She can't, she can't afford it until it's approved by OCM anyways and they're gonna be more thorough.
So they got strictly. Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, the application process is, is lengthy and the sooner the better
I'll get them to receive that.
Because once I turn in, um the application for me takes a while, but once I turn it in, then they take ten business days um before I could start. And of course, all the security measures that they're asking for as well.
All right, Mark?
Uh just a consideration, and I'm sure there's, the process is pretty intensive. Uh but when it, when it comes actually to the time where they're starting to begin their sales, uh that's such a small space, I think they're asking some kind of control for in and out so that if an emergency were to happen, uh you know, we don't get clogged up.
I imagine you're only allowed a few people in there at a time.
Right.
But that particular building, there's just the one, the one door.
Right, and one, boom.
You know, so I, I, that needs to be taken into consideration, I think, when the actual time comes.
Yeah, so I wonder, it's funny because my, there is one door to this store, um but the door at the other end of the hallway, do you know what I mean? Like you go, you go, there's a hallway there and you just come in.
Yeah, that door, is it, is that the left side?
It goes to my son's apartment. If there was an emergency, I'd be like, okay, let everybody out that way.
No, I, so I just think rather than get clogged up in there, you know, I don't know, you know, you, you may not have that many people all at once, but in, in the event that you do, I think you just need to.
Like I said, it's only five people at a time.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Right.
I think they'll, they'll be, if there's anything, there's gonna be a line down the sidewalk.
I mean, it's like that in other states.
Yeah, that would be part of the.
Yeah, Alaska.
Some of them will come across the street while they're waiting.
Exactly, right?
Shopping dump.
In Alaska, you had to, you, you would have to show ID through a, like a bank thing.
Yep.
Put it in, they check, and they were, I think, I think going by the one or two people at a time.
Yeah.
Like I said, they're.
Right, and that's how most dispensaries are, you'll, your IDs will check and then it's, you know, a one-in, one-out kind of thing, so there won't ever be more than.
Right.
That's the way.
You're set up pretty good for that.
Like going to a club.
I mean, it's small, but you got the double door there.
Right.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like Mark's saying, there, there will be a line down the street, at least you can control.
Better a line down the street.
How many in, that inside.
Then it doesn't.
Inside, yeah, I, and um.
You'll have a doorman, right, or?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and like you mentioned, that'll be part of what I have to submit to OCM with the application is our plan for flow of traffic and um how to prevent people from, you know, getting behind the line and where they're not supposed to be, so, yeah.
So, um.
That's good.
Yeah, go for it.
The motion we need, Elena, would be a motion to approve the help me out with this.
Repeating events?
The repeating events, uh at, what's the address?
The year of.
Fourteen John Street.
Uh-huh.
Perby.
Subject to.
New York State approval.
OCM.
OCM approval.
OCM.
OCM.
Um and additionally authorization for the mayor to sign any pertaining documents. Is that, would that work?
Did you get that signed in?
Okay, you have that?
Almost.
All right, so I'm looking for that motion.
I'll move.
Thank you Doug and thank you Bobby Decker.
Okay.
Sorry, uh further discussion on that?
I'll try again.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
I started first.
All right, opposed or extensions? All right, carries. Okay, we're all set, um keep emailing myself and Kevin.
Awesome. Okay.
Um just to make sure we keep the ball rolling.
Father and mother.
And if you don't have Elena's email, I'll get that to you and we'll start everything moving, so.
Yes.
Perfect, and I could um get the template to you again, or you can just do like you did and change the dates for the event.
Back to you.
I'm glad, if you give me a template, I'll, I'll adjust it as necessary, so that's perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, okay. So while we're um moving on and before I get to the, the mayor updates, I wanted to show a little bit of the footage uh that we had available via drone from the September seventh storm uh and recovery that ripped through, that you're gonna hear us address a lot and, you know, the police department report and the DPW's response, but uh there's just a, a few videos that I wanted to kind of put up there on the screen, just so everyone could see this. Uh doing one, nope, that is not what I wanted to do at all. So this is basically right over Hume's. And this is uh to the south in the country club. You're gonna see the park on the left side of the screen in a minute. And the Catholic church there, and armory. This next video is from High Street, uh starting on the pole that got snapped that was uh across from the old St. Mary's and the apartments and across from that little park there. And it's going to pan towards Wood Park. And that's actually Parsons right there, which had, uh which was clo- one of the many that closed. You can see some stuff down chaining across the street over here.
Remarkably clear.
Oh, the resolution, unbelievable.
The resolution is insane, it is just insane. And there's Wood Park. And all of its branches down in glory. I have two more videos to show you in just a moment. You can see a little bit right here, but we'll see it in more in a minute. Uh that was the pole that went down behind Iron Coffee.
Oh yay.
Uh and um the Monahan Building, in fact, I think it's coming down to it. It's right over here, down here. Uh we have a better shot, but that pole is basically sitting right on the ground and the transformer's sitting right in the ground there too. There it is.
Okay.
Right there, just chilling.
I just got turned on today.
Mm-hmm.
Uh yeah, it was on and then it was off and then it was on, that's, that's the pole sitting on the ground. Transformer there. Just for perspective, uh where am I here? This is the Monahan Lock, this is Iron Coffee over here, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, that's the alley and, and this is the, the pole and the transformer that's in there.
Actually, you can't see the, you can't see Iron Coffee, it's a company.
Not yet, it's over, it's over, all right.
Yeah, it's a fire.
And then uh the final video I wanted to show is Parsons Avenue. Which is right, lost the screen now, no, I'm sorry, left the screen now. Now that's, is that the driveway? I never get my perspective right, geez. There we go, there's the tree across Parsons.
Yep.
And Abbott Street, which is to the north and, or, or up and to the left on, on this, also had numerous uh.
I got one came from my old yard, one came back from my new.
Situation, numerous issues, so. It was uh, it was quite an event and I, I say all that and give that perspective just so I, I think we can give full perspective to how incredible uh the response was and I wanted to make sure that those uh people are, are thanked directly. Um we have tremendous thanks owed to many. Uh first off, the Huesick Falls Police Department Chief Tim Culonari and specifically Officer Davik and Salgado, who were on that evening, Fishers and Waters who came in uh and Hudson who was from midnight to eight, uh was got to call in, they were incredible. There were other officers who would have been there, but they were literally just coming off of shifts um and they just did a magnificent job. We had three fire departments there, um and they were all incredible. Huesick Falls Fire Department with Chief Paul Adamonis, North Huesick Fire Department with Chief Al Borenz and Huesick Fire Department's uh Chief Richard Hunt. Uh addition, and I, I forgot this on the um, on the list here, but I also wanted to mention uh the New York State Police had someone down here and Rensselaer County Emergency Services, uh Jay Wilson was in person. Uh it was just, as it always is, uh it was a tremendous response. Uh within the village, our DPW worked miracles, Kenny Holbrook, the superintendent, and the entire crew was amazing. Our water operators and sewer operators, uh Jim Herbert, Josh Magazano, Kenny Holbrook, Keith Pierce, um Pat Vicutius and his crew and all of the equipment and the magical work they did and the efficient work they did getting, uh helping with clearing trees. Um Tri-State Federal Crime Unit Jim Martinez and Huesick Provisions Marion Wickelbauer offered free lunches to our DPW crew and first responders on the day after, after a very long night and early morning, so. Uh it was a tremendous response and um emergency services, they're pretty incredible. When you see them in action in a crisis, it's, it's another level of incredible, so Mark.
All right, the, the drone was made available by the rescue squad.
And the drone was made available by the rescue squad, yep.
Yes.
Um so thank you to all who were involved. One update, I did not put on the agenda, but I thought about it later because the uh actual item is there. We do have a CE-SEA contract uh for approval for the board tonight. This will be uh the contract, collective party agreement between the Village Huesick Falls and the Department of Public Works, um of which Deputy Mayor Ryan, Trustee Shudy, who's coming later, were invaluable during the negotiations, so that is on the agenda for later this evening and trustees, you do have that uh resolution in your paperwork. All right, with that being said, we are at the people to be heard section. Um as we typically do, we'll open it up to whoever would like to speak, I'll get an initial idea of how many would like to speak and set a time limit and as a reminder, we audio record all of our meetings and they are available on YouTube for your listening pleasure. Would anyone like to speak to the board tonight? One, two, Mark, why don't you go first and then uh you can go second?
Uh just, I, I mentioned it to the mayor earlier, but I was authorized at our meeting Monday night at the town board uh to bring up the fact that we're gonna start pursuing, I think, the solar project uh on top of the old landfill, that uh there was some zoning issues that they were supposed to have taken care of when they first set up that project, that they never took care of. Um mainly the, uh they were supposed to put a fence around the perimeter, there was, the fence was supposed to have a gate, an access gate that the fire departments were supposed to have keys to and there was supposed to be some training. And I think there was a couple other small things, none of those things ever happened. I, I have not heard of the new owner, the mayor mentioned there is a new owner. I know there was a, a company that was inquiring about this stuff, but as part of the zoning or the solar uh projects that are all of a sudden being, uh that we're starting to deal with, uh a valid point was made, how can we consider uh solar projects the size that we're considering if we can't even manage uh the solar project that happened on top of the landfill? So it's been a number of years, that company that initially set that up has gone away, you know? But still, there has to be some provisions, I mean, it's a very valid point. So we are looking at it, pursuing the new owners, if they're new owners. Hopefully, maybe they're already on board with fixing the thing that needs to be fixed.
If they bought it, there's probably Elena on it still, so.
Sort of, it's, I'll, I'll speak to that in a minute.
I don't mind.
It may be a little, but the, the board just wanted me, I said I was just coming to this meeting tonight to make you guys aware of that, we, we need to do the enforcement aspect of what the zoning board had uh, you know, set up for them originally.
So I forgot to mention.
That's your zoning board, right, because.
Ours, ours.
Yeah.
Town zoning board.
I forgot to mention this earlier, when you speak, you're supposed to state your full name and street address for the record, so. Hi Mark, and Mark, even though he's a village code enforcement employee, that hat is off and he's speaking to the board as a town supervisor right now. Um so just as a little bit of backstory, Monolith and the village did their solar project before I got here. Bobby, you.
Well, I'm before me.
Was before you as well?
Yes.
I was on East Lake.
Maybe Kevin was the only person on the board at the time, this was a while back. Um that project led to four locations of panels on top of the municipal building and that little weird thing onto off to the side by the park that everyone hates, on top of the water treatment plant, right Kenny? There's a, an array next to the wastewater treatment plant and the fourth and biggest one is the one that's on top of the landfill. This issue exploded exponentially in complexity because A, it's on top of the landfill, which means there's certain things you can't do, and like if you're going to set up a fence, but you're on top of a landfill that has a cap that's monitored by DEC, it's like a huge mess. And then later, the landfill got designated as a Class II State Superfund Site because of the presence of PFOA. Um then Monolith basically went out of business and all of Monolith's various entities and projects ended up getting kind of casually scarfed up by various companies. One of them in particular ended up taking over the smaller three first and just recently has been working on or has finished the acquisition for the biggest one. And in the conversation I had with him on the phone, one of the things they've been doing is they've been reviewing what the work done was to find out if anything was missing and everything that Mark has said is stuff that they already know about in their review of the previous Monolith work.
I had supplied the information to anybody who asked, there was a couple of companies involved, I'm not sure where it all ended up.
Yep.
You actually had more information on that than.
Yeah, so I, I asked for some information, received it and we're just starting to review it and if Mother Nature would hold off, I'll have some time. Um but I have the original agreement, so I wanna kind of run it through you and if any other trustees wanna kind of hop in and review all that stuff, very glad to do that. Um I know there's.
The town is in the zoning board looking for the more information.
Okay, I will try to get the information, I'll get it to your town supervisor you and um tha- and that'll be, you know, distributed as you need to to whatever board. And I can get contact information as well for who I was talking with. I don't necessarily have a strong opinion either way on this project that's outside of the village, but it's just kind of a town resident. Um but that being said, I know that it's a very polarizing, cool electricity joke, polarizing uh issue and I think I just wanna kind of get to understand the whole situation before I make an opinion on it, that's kind of where I'm at.
The point that was made to us, and it's, it's very valid, is you know, the size of the project that we're looking at uh Pine Valley Road, Four Road, is a hundred and twenty acres, fifty thousand solar panels.
Oh, wow.
So.
That's a lot.
That's a lot, and then there is one other smaller, Wilson Hill Road, that just, that was just presented uh last Monday. So, but that's a much smaller project.
Where's that, Mark?
Wilson Hill?
Oh.
It's a little different area.
Proximity of, of the cell tower?
Yes.
Say no more.
How many acres and how many panels again?
Yeah.
The uh, the uh CS Energy one, it's called the Fox Hawthorne Solar Project. It's a hun- approximately a hundred and twenty acres, fifty thousand.
What's the address?
It's uh Ford Road and Pine Valley Road.
Uh.
So no specific.
Ford Road's a dead end.
I'll just do Pine Valley Road.
They doing it right on that field at the end of Ford Road, the Ford's property, or they doing it on Timmer, Marv's back, Marv's?
So, so where, where is Ford?
It's off of Pine Valley.
Before.
Off Pine Valley, past Bogey.
It's a dead end road.
Yeah.
So here's twenty-two, here's Pine Valley.
Yeah.
Uh how far down am I going?
Almost, quite a ways.
Almost.
Is that Scott's Farm?
Well, it's, it's somewhere over there, I can never find the stuff.
Yeah.
Uh here's Playdo.
It's right near where. It's right near where Spicer.
No, you're you're.
Yeah, it's where Spicer, I think, meets Pine Valley.
Comes off of Pine Valley.
Supposed to.
You find the Potter Hill Barn and move north about.
All right, well, it's it's somewhere in that area, but it's a huge area, so. I just wa- I just, I'm very interested to see how that whole situation plays out, so.
But i- in in uh discussion with the solar panels, Chuck brought to my, from Chuck Problem brought to my attention on the other day about the situation, the condition of the the grass and the the around the current solar panels.
Hey Kenny?
He just read.
Can you talk about, I know previous years back when Monolith was going under or it was kind of, no one was sure who owned it. Maintenance was very awful, which is giving me a fun, it is still awful?
Yeah, cuz that's Chuck said it's up over the to- over the top of the panels.
Let's send Mark some pictures today, let's put some pictures. There's, I mean, there's trees growing up through the solar panels, I mean.
That's a Chuck set.
They're not big yet, but we need to.
They're getting there.
They need to be addressed, okay. I just wanted to.
Kenny, remind me tomorrow and Friday to reach out to them and figure out who do we need to talk to to get that moved up.
Who do the panels benefit?
Not us. No, yeah, just the.
Just the landowner?
We get credit, we don't get like nine more dollars.
Well, we, yeah, they 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 um years ago, they they were benefiting us, but now because, I guess it was after like, after ten years, we we have to take them over and and then.
I'll get some, I'll get some more information on that, but I know there's two types of setups. One is it's a measured amount and that measure is credited against whatever the draw is. The other way, which is the way I think it's set up in the smaller locations, is it's basically contributing to the power needs, so the power grid is only going to pull what it needs. Which is means you can't really measure it because all of the grid is doing is grabbing power that it doesn't have from the solar panels, but the it's, we'll get some more information and explain that, but it's always been one of those confusing, like I don't quite understand how that draw happened and then.
Yeah, but never others, there's.
Yeah, it's hot mess, so. All right, thank you, Mark. Town Supervisor Mark. All right, uh second, you wanna speak?
Megan Albert, T Center Street. Um I came to discuss uh once again the Historic Preservation Commission. Um in April, the board approved the creation of it, but since then, we've been um gathering members that were qualified to be a part of the commission, especially to meet the guidelines to become a certified local government. This has been a smaller pool for a lot larger grants. And so we have found those members. Um I emailed the list of those members and I was hoping that it would be considered to approve them as members so that we could meet sooner than later. Um especially considering the grant guidelines, or deadlines, rather.
What are our next steps on this?
I know, I know that we need.
Studying up the uh the Historic Preservation Commission.
You'd have to do a resolution that sets forth essentially what the parameters of the commission are and what powers and duties that they would have. And then you'd have to appoint members and identify what the terms are gonna be. I don't know if they'll be staggered or everybody would have the same term, but.
So you have a plan on membership?
Yes.
And?
It's in the V email.
Okay, and terms, how long it would go, size of? Okay, so then I just need to get it to Elena and Doug and whoever else is involved to review?
Yeah, we need a template, right, for the.
Look, for the grant charge.
I have, I have stuff that we can use that I've done with other municipalities.
Yeah.
I just need guidance from you guys as to what exactly you want approved, so that I can put it into the template.
Okay. Okay, so we have to do the municipality side of it using the recommendations that you guys have have set up and that's what, Doug, can you keep, make sure I'm I'm, we're moving on that over the next couple of days?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We have a special meeting next week, so as I said, oh no, we we already passed that one. It's possible we could have everything ready for that meeting next week, here, same same time. Um if not, we'll look for the October meeting.
That'd be great, yeah, especially um so, once that happens, so at that point, then we would be able to need to hopefully write uh ordinance to hopefully pre- presenting it for approval.
Okay.
By the end of the year.
Is a commission like this, does it require a member of the board to be part of it? Or is it just the municipality?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I think questions if it has authority, right?
Well, I I mean, they don't have the authority to act, they have the authority to.
The ordinance?
Things of that nature, only this board has the ability to act on these.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. If you have not heard from one of us by Friday, shoot, shoot me another email. Do you have my cellphone?
I don't think so.
I'm gonna email you right now my number so you have it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wanna speak to the board? Trust the board. Yes, sir, and as I mentioned, please state your name and address for the record and go for it.
My name is Chris Rayner, Doc Rayner. I wanna know what we're gonna do about Third Street with this whatever across the street from me in the trailer. That homeless people living in the back street, there are pit bulls out running around. They got two pit bulls out running around all the time. Cops are there once, twice a week, sometimes twice a day. I've had enough. I've had enough.
We are too, we have.
So this is.
I've about ready to shoot that dog today. I come home, I got home at twelve, twelve thirty. I love St. Olivers, remember? I work hard, I work all the goddamn time. My bedroom windows right there, they're up eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning, making noise and stuff like that, I can't sleep. It's pathetic, they got homeless people sleeping in the back in the tent. There are pit bulls out there aggressively after me today. I couldn't even go and get in my truck. I almost went inside and got a gun and shot it.
This, please don't do that.
I've had enough. Our neighbors have had enough. Everybody's had enough.
Yeah.
Please don't do that. We have been talking about.
And in all fairness to the dog, it never has been really aggressive. I told her there's a leash law. They gotta leash it, they gotta chain over here and stuff like that. They got two dogs in there, they need more than that with the seven kids she has. And you see on that leash maybe once a month or something like that, if we're not on a leash, other nets, run up and down the road, stays in the yard, but sometimes run up and down the road. What are we gonna do about it? We need to do something about it.
There are a lot of things that are in process.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I just had enough, you know, in my.
I understand the frustration.
Trust me, Doc, we all have. We're we're we're, it's in process.
Yeah. I know.
I know, you do.
And and the process has been.
I know, I know, it's a process.
Oh, I know.
And the process has been.
One o'clock in the morning, they're up.
It's been taking too long. We've been trying, there are.
I understand, I talked to Mark about it. There were, so there, I mean, she's always moving, always moving and stuff like that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago, and I think it was a couple of years ago when, well Frankie Rubble's lived there, when he mo- when he went to South Carolina, sold it to his, the guy he was working for or whatever. She showed me paperwork one time and said, I don't own nine thousand dollars, so she ain't paying her, I don't know who's paying the water bill. The skirting on that thing, there's no skirting on the side, those water lines are right there. I had to call the water department once about three, four years ago, so water, Jenny says you're spraying. The water's frozen there because the lines lay right against that. There was just like rubber roofing down there. Now there's nothing there. What happens in the winter time? They just run the water bill up?
Yep.
And they're just, they're just a drain on society.
And, I mean, regardless, regardless of of opinions and that.
I'm just saying the way that I got no. Today, today it was almost, almost something was done today.
We are very concerned about winter coming in that situation. We as a municipality are gonna be acting on code issues, which we know are and that those are in process. If there's public safety issues, our encouragement would always be contact the police, even if it's a small issue, because that establishes the record.
Gordon contacted your police today. I went over there, not to pick on them at all. I feel bad for them when they go over there, stuff like that, because I've seen them and the guy in her, her boyfriend's there one time or something like that. Calling pussies, telling them to get out of there. They didn't know what to do, they're looking at each other, I'm videotaping this.
We're not looking for that language to be in. I, we know it's there, but.
So.
Okay.
So I went over there, there's two of them sitting in the park and I told them about it, cuz I was right out of my tree. I went over there and told them about it. They told me to go over to the, and they give me the dog officer, her dog Warden's name or whatever, had one of the other officers. So I go over there, there's two cops over there, they can't find it. I go to the bank, do my business, come back. They give me that number, I call that number, go ahead, call that number, nothing happens. Nobody answers, nothing happens.
Did you leave a message?
Nothing happens, you don't get an answer machine. Want me to dial it again?
No, that's okay, that's okay.
Chris, Chris, give me a call tomorrow.
We will, and we will.
I'm just, I'm, I've had enough.
No, the dog, your dog Warden needs me involved. She's been there before, but I'll give her the number because you're right there, so you can call her.
I told them that there's a leash law. I tried to be nice and you can't even be nice, cuz you do something, then you're that guy.
Yeah, you're right.
But just.
But I tried that, I tried that whole route when they were out there, when it was eleven o'clock at night and they're out there and he goes out there, he's not with her anymore, but in the back the other day, so I don't know, this was a year ago, a couple of years ago. And he make, he goes out in the car, cranking up the music and whatever else, and I just asked nicely, you know, if you, you try to be a nice guy. So I said, you know, do you call the cops, do you not? So I asked nicely, I said, could you turn down the music? I'm trying to sleep, I get up in the morning, go to work. Then the girl was nice, she goes over and asks him. Next thing you know, he's like, F him, if he had any balls, he'd come out here and tell me himself and that.
Again, we're not, we're not, we understand this is the, this is.
I did say. Then, then he's out in the middle of the street saying, how long this town? And a month later, cops come calling back to jail, not to jail, but back.
So again.
That's what's going on down there.
Speak to Mark tomorrow. Uh if you have other concerns about what the police can and can't do, Chief Culonary is back there, you can set up a time to meet with him, that would be, you know, that those would be our encouragements, but we're sorry about the frustrations. We also have our frustrations with what authority we have and the concerns we have.
Yeah, and what you can do and what you can't do and stuff like that, as far as getting somebody like that in trouble out there.
But it's it's good to hear from people, so thank you.
It's ruined the whole anyway.
Yeah, we, we know, we're trying.
I know, I know, I know, I'm I'm sorry, I just, like I said, I had enough today.
I'm with you.
I'm also gonna find out why this number isn't working, cuz this is the right number, it's supposed to be working.
Yeah, he said, he said she just gave it to him. The the police officer, very nice, said that they just gave him the number, she just gave him a couple of weeks ago or something like that. I called it, there was nothing.
I've had that number for a while, it's supposed to be working.
You can't, you don't get a message, you don't get none. If they, they don't have an answer machine?
I'll find out. They should, so that's what's.
Maybe went out with the.
We'll find out, we'll find out.
Thank you very much, but I'm sorry.
Yep, yep. And one of the things we're actually looking to do is is trying to get um a second uh dog warrant in case the first one's not available.
I thought I could get. I thought I could get her out of there, I'd buy the place for cash and both of them. I really would. The neighbors would buy it.
What you do privately, go to town.
They want it for yesterday night. Be two years trying to get her out of there. I'm gonna need to deal with it. I gotta go, thank you.
Doc, thanks for stopping.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we are going to move on. Uh reports. Yep, thank you very much. And you got my email?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Please forward, Chief Culonary?
Well. Last one, there were five hundred and three calls in the village, four eighty-four were handled by the Housick Falls Police, ten by Renssor County and nine by the New York State Police. That being said, uh we were called to assist outside the village ten times. We made a total of seventeen arrests. And we're still working on getting uh the proper stuff for DCJS for our three new hires. I got a uh, an update from our vendor that we were gonna purchase the guns from. Uh he cannot get them, so I flew out there to three different agencies, two got back to me, and it looks like we're gonna save just over two hundred dollars. Between two hundred and two fifty for the uh, for the guns.
Going through the other place?
Uh let's see what else. Oh, there's.
Chief, chief, I'm sorry, where's the other, where's the place we're getting the guns from now?
I'm sorry.
Where is the place we're getting the guns from?
Well, there's a place in Rochester, there's a place in Connecticut, and there's direct from the factory where it makes the guns.
Okay.
So, but two got back to me already and it looks like the lowest bid is about twenty-nine dollars per gun lower.
Okay.
So I'm happy about that.
Elena, do we have to reapprove?
Yeah, you'd have to do a new motion with a new vendor.
All right, so Chief.
And I have, I have a copy of it here.
All right, when you get um, you said you had, you have two and you have a third one coming?
I have a third one coming.
We'll have to approve whichever one we go with, so when we have that, um tell us and next week we could probably approve that when we have the third one.
Okay, good.
All right.
Uh there's number ten training in the park tomorrow between ten and twelve by Renssor County Health Department. It takes between five and ten minutes to learn about Narcan, to train with it. So I put the flyers up at Stewart's, at the municipal building, the post office, and just now at DPW. So any of the employees and the public of course are encouraged to attend if they can.
All right, um any questions? I will say we had um and and do you guys see that in the report, the storm report? Even though technically it's a September event, I decided to put it in this meeting. Twenty, twenty-two calls inside of three hours when that storm hit. In particular, within about twenty-five minutes, we had fourteen calls. Within about thirty minutes, we had fourteen calls coming. It was unlike anything I've I've ever heard. It was just, just, it was insane. I was listening on the scanner app, trying to follow all of the calls and starting to hear that their list of places they were going to was quite something. Um any questions, Chief, uh trustees? All right. Hearing none, looking for motion to approve the police department report.
Motion, second.
Thank you, Bobby and Bobby. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close their attention. Carries. Thank you, Chief. Code enforcement partner, Mark?
Uh not too many changes. I think most everybody is aware of some of the bigger things we're working on. Fifty-nine Classic Street in Delaware this past month, uh so we're going to court on that uh tomorrow night, hopefully. Hopefully that'll work out. So we did execute the warrant uh on that, that we, you know, came from the judge and uh went in with the police department. So now it worked out fine. I think uh, you know, I, everybody seems aware, when we get involved with these things, I mean, the time and paperwork and everything else that's, you know, it, there's a lot that goes into those things and and they are time consuming, so. Um I, I'm still trying to get caught up, but you know, it's just seems like every day something, one of these bigger projects coming in. So. Yeah, just, just so you're aware, but uh it does get frustrating sometimes. I, and I, I get the frustration the board's feeling. I, you know, I have the same frustrations, so you know, we just get to keep trying to plug along and do the best that we can. You know, and I share Chris's, I mean, we all share Chris's frustration. You know, that's been going on way too long, it's just one of some things that works against.
I mean, we've lost, we've, I, I mean, we've lost people in the neighborhood because of that location, because of that house.
Yeah, that's right, so. I continue to have problems with mail, you know.
Mark showed me today, it's ridiculous.
We're supposed to be sending out, you know, certified mail.
Legally required to.
I also send out first class in case people don't sign up for the certified, and now we're getting them both back. You know, which used to be, I would just get the certified back, so at least I know the first class made it. Um and that was kinda my fallback, but now I'm not even getting, I'm getting both back. So there's an issue, it's particularly with that uh with the property we're dealing with at twenty, uh both John Street properties. So I, because after the last meeting, and we did post on the property and all that, we did, I think we were doing our due diligence. But after the last meeting and approved and moved forward with the demolition, the first class letter that I sent out, we'd already gotten back the certified. And by thought the first class had made it, let me get that back, then then the first class one came back. That's right. So.
We gotta do it all over again, huh?
So Elena.
No, I don't think so, I do.
Let's do diligence.
Generally, when we've, when we have the legal requirements to notice things and they, those things get bounced back and there's another property that we we've had similar issues with, at what point legally have we done everything we can? And like, I'm just afraid that it's a, it's a weird spot that could be used against the the things we're trying to do legally and legitimately in like a court setting.
Yeah, it's a little bit complicated, cuz normally if there was already a court proceeding, then you go to the judge and you ask the judge for the alternative service to be approved and the judge authorizes it. But in this particular case, there is no court proceeding, it's an administrative proceeding at this level.
Okay.
So I think that we're good, as long as we followed our code and done everything that we're supposed to do.
And we did post on the building.
Right.
And I have pictures of all that, you know, when I post up, I take pictures.
Good, that's great. That's great, I just got the reports up, so.
And you did it on the car today as well, right? You said you posted.
I did it on his, on his house door yesterday and the car today.
Okay. Right.
Classic.
And you know, as Mark and I were talking about earlier, there's another situation that Mark's, Mark spent a lot of time working on and getting the record put together on and we have a phone call in from that owner as well. It's just another property that was purchased recently and they're trying to do work, but it's, they're working, I mean, they're communicating with the code department, but they're not really listening to the code department and they're upset that the code department is in effect doing their job, making requirements to open things up and so on and so forth, so I will agree with Mark that each of these little things becomes a very large thing and a very time consuming.
Well, it's really what made me think of it today, because uh it was an inspection yesterday that turned in to a lot of, to working on that letter today. And I had, you know, I had the mayor, Bobby, review it uh in person. And you know, just to try and make sure that they understand it and um and I guess the point I'm trying to make, just, there's a lot of time involved in getting, making sure that it's done right and trying to, I don't wanna be a liability to the village. It's kind of something that could end up in court as well, so I'm trying to make sure.
Yes. Yep.
But it's, it is time consuming, you know, I had an inspection today and then I stayed late to to do the report on that inspection and, you know, so this stuff, you don't get to anything else.
Yeah. Um do you guys have any questions for Mark on the report or any of this?
Oh, I got one question. So now you've put the thing in the car, how long do you wait till we call Phil?
Uh technically, I think the loss is.
You can say seventy-two hours, if I talk, that's only seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two.
Yeah, cool.
And you know, I also included the uh, the steel. And, you know, I also included the uh, the steel in that, so, I'll have to take a look, a closer look at that and see what we do, the car, we could definitely seventy-two hours, the steel may take a little bit longer, but I think we're setting up, so maybe we can steal it.
You have to get the railroad to come get that, it's all tracks.
And then, uh, no, it's uh, it's the bridge.
Oh, it's the.
The little shuttle, yeah, moves that shop bridge down, that's how long that's going to be, and then we can clean up the lot.
Yeah. So Mark, just for, for due diligence and making sure we're not rushing anything, seventy-two hours is like the minimum point that should pass before anything would start, and since that's the weekend, probably the earliest thing would be starting moving on Monday, because that would be well more than seventy-two hours.
Yeah, we'll see about getting, at least get the car out there, because that seems to be the biggest issue.
Well, I don't think the towing company charges us overtime on the weekend, so I think we did.
Seventy-two hours, seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours expires in two weeks.
Shallow, shallow.
Oh, Elena.
Bill said his ready guys are ready to go at a moment's notice, we call all we all.
In terms of that local law that's giving us the authority to do this, how does this, this steel beam sitting there, how does that factor into it, what's the rule?
I don't see where it does.
No, I, I wrote up, I wrote up other violations.
So that's like a separate violation based on, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's why I said, let me look that a little bit closer, but I wrote up, I wrote up violations on steel, I wrote up violations on the overgrowth.
Okay.
I think the void, the other one passed, the void ordinance may be, not the car one.
I mean, it may address the violation of being, just taking over the property, I, I'd have to look at it to see.
I didn't write it.
Better make sure first for we own the.
No, I, I, we've been, I have to game it work, I mean, I ordered up under, I think, uh, New York State, uh, property.
I'm assuming there's no response to any of it, right?
Alright, so unless you guys have other questions, looking for motions to approve the code enforcement report?
Uh, maybe.
Um, Devin and Bobby Decker, all in favor?
Bobby, you are on tonight.
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor?
No.
Aye, thank you Kenny, opposer abstentions, Kerry's, boy, that was pulling, pulling, pulling you there. Um, treasure report, Bobby Decker, anything you wanna note?
No.
Scroll down, I'm behind here on the report, so, I'll put the uh, storm data for a minute, um, looking for motions to approve the treasure reports.
Motion, oh, sorry, I'll take the second.
Motion.
Alright, Deb and Bobby Ryan, all in favor?
Appreciate it.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions? Alright, Kerry's, uh, clerk, deputy clerk report, I'm gonna skip the code enforcement, Mark did such a great job. Uh, treasure report, uh, clerk, deputy clerk report, anything, Clarissa, you wanna highlight?
Uh, nope.
Bobby Ryan, anything you wanna highlight?
No.
Any questions?
Water rolls around, yay.
Yeah.
Yay. All in favor of approving the clerk, deputy clerk report? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, abstentions, opposed?
We need to do a motion.
Uh, motion to, did we, we did the motion, we didn't, I need a motion to approve clerk, deputy clerk report.
Second.
Thank you Deb and thank you Bobby Ryan, sorry, I'm in such a hurry, I forgot that step, all in favor, again, aye, opposer abstentions, alright.
Aye.
Highway DPW report, Kenny, anything or Bobby Ryan, if you wanna highlight?
No.
I didn't, I didn't, in, in a day with the whole.
I know, and I appreciate that, um, yeah, uh, ridiculous amount of work, uh, you guys have done again, thank you guys so much.
Show all of that in the, in the reports.
Um, I don't know if people saw it on the Facebook page today on the la- latest update, but, uh, the DPW crew has been driving through the village and particularly in the spot where the storm had the most damage, and they have been picking up things that were on the curb, and they will continue to do so through Friday, um, and if you have any questions, you know, call Kenny and leave a message to department, they're good, anything else you guys wanna say?
Yeah, Kenny, I just, again, wanna thank you for the, the way you and your crew responded and how you've been responding, this, it's not normal, uh, situation, and we appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Absolutely.
Um, I did notice on Main Street, um, today, the, and I was looking, talking about the size of the, oh, in front of, uh, your no, your no, your no building, Mr. Sam.
I saw, I saw it's not, it's not his.
I know it's not his, but I saw it on the sidewalk.
I talked to the guy two days ago, and I said, if you get it out by the end of the road, we'll pick it up for Friday, it's fine.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I know the size was a little bit larger than what you had said.
This is what it is. Put it on his truck, it's like, my man is driving down here.
He drove on from his driveway out to the, to curb.
I very much was talking to him.
Yeah, I talked to him, I talked to him.
Okay.
I just wanna say that, you know, I, um, Saturday morning, I drove through the village after, you know, Friday, and, and I looked and, and I sent my guys a text, and I won't use the verbiage that I use, but I'm damn proud of my guys, they, they did a fantastic job.
Again, I say that.
Yeah.
They really did, and, and the village, I, uh, I was, it was great to see online, the village residents really saw that, um, all over the place, so, thank you guys.
And Pat McCutis again, for, he helped the highway out immensely.
Exactly. I'm still be there, if it wasn't for Pat.
I mean.
Yep.
Pat just calls me and says, I'm coming, and I don't ask questions, I just, okay.
Yeah.
Abbott Street would probably still be closed if it wasn't for Pat.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just don't ask questions, he just got.
So, um, with all this going on, Kenny and I have been texting behind the scenes, I've been paranoid about Hurricane Lee, I've been watching it for like the week and a half, and now it's
It is very nice.
projected to likely hit somewhere between Boston and Maine or Nova Scotia, so, looking as early as I think Fri-, no, Saturday into Sunday, we may start to feel that or see that, hopefully it pushes to the east, but right now, actually, today, it shifted to the east a little bit more than it was being projected to, so we're, we're keeping an eye on that, and you guys have already been out cleaning up catch bases and so on.
I actually, I, I actually texted Jerry McAulty, who's in Marcus' venue, and left him.
Oh my gosh, I can't believe he's out there right now, I hope he's out of there soon.
No, he's gonna stick it out till Sunday.
Is he really?
I've been there for this for hurricanes, it's pretty rough.
Good trip. Good trip.
What'd he say, said he's sticking it out?
That is, that is the special kind of crazy that we like.
Well, you, you really have no choice, because you're on an island, and the ferry stopped running, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not going to.
It's sick, you're stuck.
Alright. Any, uh, anything else for the, for Kenny?
No, I'll make a motion, we accept it.
Thank you Bobby Ryan.
I'll second.
Thank you Bobby Decker, all in favor of approving the highway report?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions, Kerry's, sewer report, Kenny, anything you wanna highlight?
No.
Great, awesome.
No.
Honestly, it was awesome.
Nothing, nothing happened during the storm for the sewer.
It was fantastic.
That's great.
It was fantastic, so, great job there on not having to do anything with that.
I got nothing for it.
Um, unless you guys have questions, looking for motion to approve the sewer report?
Deb?
Motion.
Thank you Deb, and someone else, Bobby Decker, all in favor?
I'll give it.
Bobby, aye.
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 Aye, opposed or abstentions, Kerry's, and water reports, um, Bobby Decker, anything you wanna highlight? Lot of stuff going on.
Pretty much the stuff we're gonna talk about later when the bid's coming, and the Emmens Pump, I think, is in service, right?
Uh, yes, yes, and when we, when we come up to that conversation later, I got a little more context to give on that.
Yeah, uh, pretty much everything I would say we're gonna be talking about anyways.
Yep, and we do have a little more, uh, information, I didn't have it last month, but July and August, uh, water revenue, I would expect us to kind of fall off the wayside now as we're heading into fall and winter, but we do have our water numbers up there, uh, looking for motion to approve the water report.
Motion.
Thank you Deb and whoever else.
Second.
Can I just say?
Yeah.
The water guys were fantastic too, helping, you know, along with Keith and the sewer, with this whole storm thing, you know, you know, they worked their butts off, they were out in the middle of the night with us, you know.
Yep. And, uh, it was, the whole reason that we found out about the Rensselaer Street pump station was because a resident noticed there was no water pressure.
Yes.
Knew what that meant, and reached out to one of us, and that's.
I believe that, that resident used to be a former board member.
Used to be a board member, good old former trustee Craig Pine, so, that was great because he was able to give us a heads up, that got Jim and Josh out there and you guys, that got it resolved before most people woke up in the morning, I don't think people even noticed that there was an issue.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Probably not.
But man, were we sweating bullets over, hmm, I did not want people to wake up and have the water pressure, so, again, echo that, amazing response. Um, all in favor of approving the water report?
Aye.
Do you have a motion?
Did, who's second on it?
Uh, I think Bobby Decker did, yeah.
Thank you.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposer abstentions, alright, thank you, Kerry's, uh, do. Alright, minutes, August sixteenth, regular minutes, uh, meeting minutes, um.
I make a motion, we accept it as presented.
Alright, Bobby R and Bobby D, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions, Kerry's, the August thirtieth, special meeting minutes?
Same.
Same?
I'll second.
Alright, that was Doug and Bobby Ryan, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposer abstentions, Kerry's, and the September eleventh emergency meeting minutes, sorry, I'm trying to do something else here.
Motion, we accept them as presented?
Thank you Bobby Ryan, you second?
Second.
Uh, thank you Doug, further discussion?
Just wanna thank Clarissa for, today's the thirteenth, and the meeting was the eleventh, and we already have the me- minutes, it's pretty good.
Absolutely, absolutely, and then I sent an email, I'm really happy with the
You're welcome.
Turns it around.
Don't want here to puff up like the MECP cock or anything, but.
extra content information that's been there, I think it's, it's, uh, it's great, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions, Kerry's, alright, trying to do two things at once here, trustee committee reports, we'll go out flatly, trustee alter.
Okay, I just have one thing, well, I'll, I'll just say that I started, well, let me pull it out, I started to work on the, um, the whole Ersawama situation, and I'm gonna give you these, we're not really gonna talk about it tonight, but you can take it home and study it, there will be a quiz at the next meeting.
You can tell she was a teacher.
I was just gonna say.
I'm not gonna do that.
That's all I'm onto, you know.
I'll be skipping, it's going to be tough.
So anyway, go home and study, and we'll talk next week, and I'm not, we're not parropping it again, we're not, it's cutting where it's due down.
So don't move it.
Go on, go on, oh. Okay, and the other thing is.
We've got plenty of experts here.
Thank you.
The other thing is real quick, um, we talked about, uh, that we would do Christmas decorations, and that poles needed to be, um, more poles needed to be electrified, so that we could, which was part of the plan we talked about last year, we did a few more this year, and Kenny got some, um, some quotes for us on what that would cost for seventeen, was that the, the rest of them?
Yes, the, the ones that we all, the concrete, the real concrete.
Right, the one, not yet, you can't start National Bridge yet, so there's a proposal from, um, from Bradley's and a proposal from Hathaway's, and you can see which one's which, one is for eighty-five hundred, the one's for a thousand dollars plus, seventy-five, fifty dollars, and Housa Rising will be uh, drawing their decorations, so that won't cost us anything.
What was the purple again, I'm sorry?
The purple?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what it is purple, but for, for Bradley's, if you do it, it was seventy-five hundred dollars with, if you get contingency, that they can use our, our boom truck, which is fine.
Both.
And I think Hathaway's probably, I don't know if they have one or not.
They do.
Do they, so, theirs, theirs was eighty-five hundred for the same thing, um.
You said we have two quotes on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Did we try to get a third?
I did not, because I didn't know if, because we were doing it through a different, I didn't know if it was a village thing, so I just, I called the two contractors that we used, I couldn't get a third one, I mean, I had to call somebody else.
Okay. That would be us paying for the poles, but Housa Rising is paying for the decorations, so that we would have to get a third quote, so that we can approve that in meeting, because it exceeds five thousand.
The decorations.
Okay, I agree with that.
Well, I, yeah, he had to.
I think that's it.
Get, uh, my, monument.
The search engine.
I give away as a lift, monument, I give away as a lift there.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna see if I'll call him.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so we can't vote on this now, right, so what hap- what happens next, what happens then?
No, but. But we, once we get the third bid, uh, like we're gonna do for the water stuff, we could even do it next week.
Okay.
So Clarissa, can you make note to have the bidding for the electric poles next week in the meeting, ready to go?
Can you make a note to remind me? Cause I'm tired.
I hear you, you want me to shoot you an email reminder right now, Kenny?
I just don't care, Kenny, I don't understand.
You could, you could do that, I appreciate that.
Alright, I'll do it, I'll see, see you in Clarissa as well.
Thank you.
Alright.
Can you send me another email to remind me to check my emails?
You want me to, you wanna? Give them back to me and I'll save them, or are you guys gonna lose them, or what?
A text, yeah, yeah, send me a text to remind me to check my.
Um.
I'm sending you a text right now.
You guys, you want me to give this back to you?
Gonna ignore it.
You wanna give them back to me, and I'll give them back again next, next time?
Like usual?
The Ersawama packets or the quotes?
No, the quotes.
I don't think I got the quotes up here yet.
I don't got the quote.
I just dropped them off to Deb today, so.
Yeah, no, they're come, oh, here they are.
And then I gave her like half a quote, and she called me out and thought she was more, heavy dementia.
Deb, you can, hey Deb?
For me, then?
Deb, people can hold on to them as long as Clarissa has the copies of two, and we get the third, we can scan them and email them out and have them all together, so it's fine to distribute those.
There you go.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's, okay.
That's great, by the way, thank you, and I'm, I'm, I'm excited to get power on those poles, that, that was less than I was expecting it to be, so that's, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was gonna be a lot more.
Alright, thank you, uh, Deb, uh, Bobby Decker?
And Kenny, keep it away.
And Kenny, Bobby Decker?
Um, like I said, everything we're gonna talk about the water department, the, uh, veterans flag. We're gonna meet Friday at four, but as you know, I bought a house out of town, and this won't even come about till the spring.
Okay.
So we'll need somebody else, I don't know if any of you guys wanna do that.
I'll take care of it.
You will?
Yeah.
Alright.
You wanna meet with them on Friday then, at four o'clock, or you want me to do it and then hand off?
If you wanna hand it off, I already spoke to him anyway, I.
Who's all the ones I, I'll say, put Kevin Miller, right? Kevin Miller.
Kevin Miller, yeah.
Eric Shepard.
Yeah. Oh, cool.
That's great, so just so people know, um, the county reached out to find out if we'd be interested in getting the veteran, um, pictures and, and names and dates up on the poles, as a lot of other local municipalities have, it was something we had started to look into a couple of years back, with the possibility of an Eagle Scout or, uh, student doing that, that fell off by the wayside, but, um, Kevin Miller, who's now the head of Veteran Affairs for Rensselaer County.
Yep.
Um, has taken this back up, and we're all about it, um, so that's gonna be coming, and, and just from my vantage point as mayor, I wanna make sure that not only we're supporting this, but we're getting the word out through social media and stuff about this, and how people can do this, and, you know, sort of things about how much it costs and how long it'll be up there, and some people have talked about, some leave them up year round, but others take them down in the winter and put them back out, and.
Yeah, cause the weather.
They do weather.
Yeah, so, we'll have.
We, uh, the application hasn't been decided on the wording and.
Okay.
Money and all that, so.
And the charge, yeah, right, the cost.
I would be glad to also be included in this, just to offer whatever I can whenever I have a free minute, which is, you know, twenty minutes out.
I'll see them Friday, he just texted me, I was sitting there, four o'clock.
Okay.
Friday, so, then I'll pass everything.
That'll be great. Um, and Bobby is, uh, purchased, Bobby Decker has purchased a house outside the village, he's still living in his, in the village location,
Two more months.
But, uh, one of the requirements for being a village trustee is living in the village, so the moment you move out of the village, uh, you unfortunately have to come off the board, so, we're all rooting that it takes you at least six, six more months at least to, uh, move, just can't, you do, you don't have to be. Um, it's like, it's the curse, because, and you'll be the board trustee, I think, who joined the board and then moved out of the village?
Brian.
I love the board, but, you know, this house is.
Definitely, Vanessa.
I'll just have, hang out with Mark.
Oh, yeah. We paid five, and, and then Greg left, and.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that, that, that's.
It's five, six, we paid six.
Alright, uh, Bobby, uh, yeah, Kenny?
So I just wanna say that, um, I look forward to, to, to putting up the veteran signs, I think it's a fantastic, fantastic thing, and, you know, my, myself and my guys, you know.
Oh, yeah.
It's, you know.
My, uh, my father-in-law down in the village of Nassau, and his, two of his brothers are actually on, um, um, on poles down there, and they didn't know it was coming, so we got to surprise them, and it was a really awesome event, so.
And I come from a family of veterans, so, you know, that's, that's a lot, means a lot, so.
Yeah.
We also have that nice monument in the park, we do pretty good memorialize it.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, so, all about it, thank you Bobby D, uh, trustee Manley is not here, trustee Sauer?
Um, I'll give a better, better update on New York Forward Grant, because there's a lot going on, so the crime frame is, Grant's doing it twenty nights.
Okay.
We have our last local planning committee tomorrow night, uh, and we also have to have, we have a project review committee that will finalize the proposal, and that committee can be made up of, um, non-conflicted people who don't have a project or anything to gain in, in the entity. Um, the timeframe means we're gonna need to have a board meeting around the last Wednesday or Tuesday of the month, first to get the proposal together.
I thought we already had one scheduled for the twentieth.
The twentieth, yeah.
The twentieth is probably too early for us to have a proposal together.
Oh, so, did we notice the, the, the meeting?
We're looking at the, more like the twenty-second.
Um, I don't think we noticed it, but it's.
Well, that, well, we're having a local, we're having a, uh, we have to have a public meeting.
That's the twentieth, is the public meeting?
That, that's the twentieth, yeah, that's a public meeting, we, we need to touch, but anybody in the public who wants to come in.
Is that a village board public meeting?
No, uh, yeah.
Um, shoot, see, I had this wrong, so then all of our, our special meeting then is not next week?
It's, we follow.
It will need to be on the twenty-seventh.
This is just a community plan, so we kinda kept the village side.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to tell Megan and, no, I don't know, Jenny, just Megan, it's two weeks from now, the special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and we'll, we'll need a, a motion later to set that, but, I'm sorry, keep, I keep going.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. So we've had, um, this is very fluid, we had a meeting, uh, with this, the private consultant firm from the state a couple of days ago, Jenna Spitz, myself and Marion, met with the person, this person was quite informative, she's, um, a manager of, of the, of the, of the firm, not just a student, who I think we got last time around.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but she threw, also throws some roadblocks, um, that we weren't anticipating. Um, a couple of things is, is around reimbursement, um, public projects that come through the municipality, uh, we will get reimbursed as we. Um a couple of things is is around reimbursement, um public projects that come through the municipality, uh we will get reimbursed as we extend the money. Anybody else, nonprofits or private businesses, only get reimbursed, they only get the state grant once they complete with the project. Which is a killer. And and there's not an anticipation that they're going to, and that's, that's only once the contract is approved and and that would be around October, November of two thousand twenty-four.
Wow.
Sure.
And any match they do has to be after the contract has been approved, so money they're putting in now is nice and good, but it's the money that you put in after the contract period. So for, and I'm going for some of the projects, so that's that's really, I just have let some of the folks know about that.
Wow.
Yesterday, um that makes financial planning and stuff, that's pretty well what happened to Jason on New York, a new store.
So can that be borrowed money?
Huh? It can be borrowed money, you can get bridge loans and that kind of stuff, the trouble is you have to, you have to anticipate what you're gonna be doing a year from now almost, and what the money's gonna be and and how you're gonna do it.
So it sounds like for those people involved, if the grant is awarded to us, they just know that they're gonna have to start looking for, likely a loan for the extra expense, knowing that at the end of the road in a year or two.
Correct, and and we're gonna have to, in the proposal, they're gonna pre-will. There's gonna have to be confidence saying, get that one.
Right.
Not just speculative, I'll get a loan somewhere, it's like if it's a million bucks or something on those ones.
Right.
Interesting.
Civicar Civicar did that with um, when they did the roof, they had to take out a bridge loan, cause they had to pay for it first and then.
So.
Okay.
The other piece of this is for the for-profits, and this is the, this is the odd part, cause it's supposed to be economic development, they want the for-profits to put fifty percent match. So someone is gonna say, I, I'm gonna spend five hundred thousand dollars come post-November of two thousand twenty-four, they have to have two hundred fifty thousand. The municipality for public projects don't have to have a match, nonprofits will need to have some kind of match, just ten percent or more, this is all stuff that is not in the proposal. It's not in the criteria or anything else.
So if she didn't, if she didn't come, we wouldn't know?
We didn't talk to her, we wouldn't know.
Yeah.
Um, the issue within, I'll just be direct, correct about it, and she told us directly, this is Department of State money, not economic development money. The consulting firm works for the Department of State. The Regional Economic Development Commission has their own rules, makes, they're the ones that make the recommendation and they do things differently what the Department of State's criteria is, and they gotta work that out behind the scenes, so you're a victim of whatever happens.
Welcome to New York.
Yeah, yeah. Um affordable housing is a priority, that's, I think you sent me something, it's been elevated as a priority, she said it's one of many priorities, but yeah, affordable housing is something, we didn't have much last year, but we will have this year if we keep the for-profits in the game.
Yeah.
Um, we talked about the Oak Masui property, which is one of the pieces that had been removed from being on the front burner, because we do not have a letter of commitment, we can't say we will. Um, they won't, this is the other piece also, they will not pay for any architectural planning or any street planning whatsoever during this whole process, either in the, in the, what they call strategic investment planning process, they won't pay for it nor afterwards, so anything we need, if we need surveys, we need someone to go look at the playground or design something, the money has to come from someplace else. So when we look at projects, with the Oak Masui project being taken out, cause that was gonna be the frontline project, and with that taking away, uh it hurts us on the public side. So the projects we have, and this is the other piece, is the Greenway, uh cause the Greenway was gonna go and round connect, there may be an access point there.
Yep. Yep.
Um they also were looking at whether that this would fund all the north end of the Greenway, the three quarters a mile, they won't do that, they'll fund connecting points to downtown. Um which might be a connecting point around Oak Masui, or the connecting point that they had an interest in, but they don't have the planning money for, and I don't know if you're aware, man, you're on Greenway committee, you go to the last meeting?
No.
There's a supposedly a public street.
Park street.
Park street that go from High Street down to the.
Yep.
Bring that up, right.
I mean, I walked that, that was a road.
Across some old St. Mary's papers.
That wasn't what that, yeah.
Yep.
If we, if we has, if we.
Right here.
Yeah, yes.
This is a street on paper, uh is, this is a wooded area right there, but I should, the pole was done, but that is a.
Of course, it's a broken drill. Of course, it's a broken drill.
Yeah, on paper it exists as a street, but in reality it's not.
It's pretty covered with trees right now.
It is very young.
But it, but it's village property.
We think broken ones, cause it's what we dump so.
That's what I mean.
Yep.
It's a village property.
It's a village property.
Yes.
Right.
It's clearly village property.
From what I've been told, over the last twenty years I've been here, yes.
So they would connect that, cause that's close enough and marginal, that connecting points to downtown.
Yep.
Is good to, you know, um, I know Paula Camperman is concerned, oh, they're gonna have to be surveys and laying these vents and, cause there're gonna be problems, yeah, but if we can say as a village, at least in the proposal right now, that's village property and we'll do a connection.
Okay.
That would be in the game.
Okay.
That's great.
We can do that. Um so we're looking without that being included around the Greenway, maybe a hundred fifty thousand dollars, just in the primary area and using some, some um lighting and whatnot. Uh, there's gonna be, the other public project is Streetscape, which is, which is fixing the the sidewalks in the downtown area, some lighting, lighting between sandbar and unahog and whatnot, I did talk to Tracy Moore. And plug in a number of two fifty, two seventy-five, he felt that would be plenty enough, I think with some of the lighting, probably three hundred, three hundred, don't find a hundred percent of it, so. Maybe we just plug in three hundred fifty thousand dollars for for lighting and access and 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 whatnot. Um, there is a municipal building, which we kinda need to know if we're doing that or not, and I guess we'll talk about that under the ARPA money.
Yeah.
Here we have.
Hand back or anything you wanna do, yeah.
Yep.
The bathrooms.
Um, but that's again, a year.
A year out.
Year, year more out. Um, there's gonna be a small project collaborative fund, which is locally managed and be managed, at least as we proposed it last year by Music Rising, that will fund projects that's under eighty thousand dollars. So that can include, um, we're looking at a number of projects, we're looking at sixteen John Street facade and she wants some solar that she'll match it with. Uh Forty-two Bistro's interested in an outside deck, that's probably a long shot, we're talking about the Firehouse Restaurant possibly. Um Thorpe's Historic Building Drug Sign, would be great to fix that and restore that.
Yeah.
Yes, that would be great, that would be great.
Um also, there's Hall Street, which which we're just talking about maybe some biomedial gardens there or something, just pretty to add up some, cause it is a park, maybe a parking spot or two, people use it for parking now.
Yeah.
Um and public art murals, and then also um Husik Divisions would be in there, because it's under eighty thousand what they're asking for, so that's a collab, we call it collective impact, small project collective impact that we can. And those decisions get made in the planning process.
Okay.
Um, hundred and eighty thousand for downtown branding, marketing, and they will pay for a marketing firm, I don't know if they won't pay for other firms. And then the, the big projects, that's really, uh, well, the the development rehabilitation is exciting, we have Civicar Woodblock. Um, that's still out there in terms of what they need, they're looking for like a million, um but I don't think they can have the match and we're not working with them on that.
Right.
They might have it, um Byte is looking um for their third floor only, um for four hundred, they would match it with two hundred, so that's a good project.
Okay. Does um, the the residential or the housing priority, does Airbnb count as a priority?
Yeah, temporary housing, they they liked that last time around, because it brings in people downtown, they face that.
Really? Okay, great, great.
They really liked it.
Yeah, you really liked it, they liked the pizza too.
Took pictures and everything.
Um, Husik Armory, which is a nonprofit, but um they're looking for an elevator and and getting that, that would be pretty much a hundred percent. The two big projects that really have housing's priority is trying to get um Jason's property at one center street then. And um we pretty well have the formula for financing that, um but they may be asking for seven hundred from here forward, it's a two point one million dollar renovation. Um so we're working with Jason on what we need to do with that proposal, and then the other big one is Twenty-four Classic Street. Um, they're initially, we're looking for a million, I think it's gonna have to be less depending on the match, um but between Jason's and that, there's a lot of residential units being created, there's a lot of commercials.
Is that the old Saluzos, that the Saluzo block?
Yes, yes.
They want to put a bakery in there.
Yeah, bakery, a restaurant, a bar.
I see they're gutting it now.
They're gutting it, he's gonna, I think they're gonna have difficulty, cause they're moving on it.
Yeah.
November of next year.
That timeline may not work for them if they're already.
Yeah, he's, he hasn't gotten back to me when I've given him the the pieces of it, so but those two buildings, those are huge projects that are transformational very clearly, but I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to fit them in as strongly as
Okay.
we would like. Um, so that's where we are with that.
Alright.
Um, there's a lot of meetings going on right now, and we're trying to finalize it, and we gotta keep it transformational, and we gotta be able to show um the collective impact from it all, in in terms of changing it. We're in the process now, we gotta collect jobs, update the job data on downtown employers from last time around, and we gotta update the investment money that people have put in from last year to this year in downtown.
So twenty-seven?
Thank you for taking.
Twenty-seven.
For our estimate?
For the, yeah.
Yeah, we'll look at that in just a moment.
We'll do the waters a moment.
I would like that.
Um, thank you for taking the lead and just wading through all of the details and waters and then the weird things that come up, because the grant game is so, so big.
Well, I I will say, just the TA consultant um offered to review last year's proposal, she has it, she's giving back to me tomorrow, give this to me back, and she's willing to review our proposal before we send it in.
Okay. That's great.
So they're very much.
That's great, and it's it's too bad that the Oak Masui spot and the uh the other one that we we tried to get on last year were just, it's not gonna be something we can have in there, because we're, we don't, we don't own it.
Working.
And putting something we don't own in there is probably gonna sink it again. That's too bad.
I, yeah, we're doing a walkthrough last time, the first thing they asked is, do we own the Classic Street?
Yep, yep, so.
Yeah. We we have a lot of psych control, like, so the ones, I'm gonna have to throw this out there and just as part of conversation, the way we're gonna treat the Oak Masui is, we're just saying it's a potential project that may come up during the planning process. If all of a sudden they give it to us, we say that.
The same token, that's possible for the county building, within the first six months of August, right now.
This was the cleared spot of the open.
Down there for.
Be something that might be available to us, if we wanna do it, I mean, it's not much we can say, but we can list it and say that's a potential, with no money, no plans around that, but that's potential.
Alright.
And it will pop up, I'm sure.
Was there ever talk or or getting hold of a kind of just about that, the old river view or the night display?
That's outside the area.
Across the bridge.
It's outside the surface here, we don't go across the bridge.
So.
Can't go across the bridge.
I have um two things, first Kenny and I spoke today about we're trying to get quotes for replacing the ramps of the municipal building and possibly moving it to the front right side when you're studying at the stairs. Um redoing the 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 bathrooms a little bit and getting more space and switching the guys and girls one to the girls one, we'll have two full stalls, also adding a room in the police department, and I just uh sent a message to chief to talk about the possibility of downstairs, we have the old remnants of what used to be a lockup, there are things that would need to be done, but having a lockup here would actually be a benefit and a benefit to public safety, especially if we need to set, to bring someone to lockup, we have to, our officers have to travel and do that, and it's taking officers away, so. All of those things are speaking to some of the key words, you know, handicap accessibility, improving public facilities, public safety, that sort of thing.
So, but did you wanna go after this money or hardcover money for that?
No, I think we should, we should go after this, I'm I'm very happy to go after this.
So would you be able to provide me with just a three sentences on?
We're gonna have quotes hopefully by the twenty-seventh that says this is what the expected cost is.
If you want to need a, a sort of description.
Those are not with the different contractors.
I need a small description, that that makes a point around the accessibility and public safety.
Yep. Yep. And whatever, whatever our match needs to be.
We don't have to do match as a public event.
Oh, okay, okay, I was gonna say.
If you do, if we have, we 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 put.
We can, and we can budget for that, that's the thing.
Some market, that only makes it better.
Okay. Um.
So a couple hundred thousand dollars maybe?
So we need um, we need a motion to set a special meeting for two weeks from now, it'll be Wednesday, the twenty-seventh at six P M here.
Yes.
Um so that we can move on this and it would be freeing up the business we have, does that work for trustees?
Yep.
Alright, um so I need the motion second.
I'll listen.
Thank you Deb, do I go and second that?
I'll second.
Beautiful. Further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
I oppose or abstentions? Okay, so we'll have the meeting set. Anything else Doug?
Nope.
Thank you. Trustee Shudding?
Uh, just a few things, uh I'm working on the handbook, which is quite evolved, actually.
That's the way it smiles.
And actually, Bobby, you and I, Brian, you and I gotta chat sometime, cause I know you have institutional knowledge, um I have some time, I'm definitely gonna have to work on this in between, but um
Mm-hmm.
It's a little challenging considering there's really not a good historical record of what we've done um with a lot of these policies, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's a, that's a project that I've been working a lot with. Um, I reached out to Capitol EAP today, Employee Assistance Program, we don't have an EAP for our employees right now, Employee Assistance Program, so Capitol EAP not only does um covers EAP for, you know, general employees, general working people, they also have a first responder program, so I think we could, I talked to the lady briefly, she's gonna call me back, I think tomorrow. But I think we could get, she'll send us a quote and stuff, but I think we could get something that covers the first responder portion for our police department. Um and then regular EAP for the rest of our employees, I I know from one, and I don't know if there's an economy of scale here, I have one large employer that uses them, and I'm wanting to say they pay about two dollars a month per employee, it's not a lot of money.
It's so worth it, it's so worth it, and.
You can call it, and if anybody knows, and I, if anybody doesn't know what an EAP program is, that you, they use some stuff in-house, but they can farm anything else, you can call them at any, anytime, Dan, I can handle the problem, and they, they're gonna connect you with somebody who's gonna treat that specific condition, certain counseling matters and stuff, I believe they they can handle some of those.
Even drug problems.
At.
As long as you turn yourself to it, you you're not penalized.
Yep. Yep, marital problems, drug problems, depression, really. I use them for hours, you know, we just had, I'm not gonna go into details, but we just had, you know, an incident that was a little traumatic for somebody, a couple of people recently, that maybe an EAP program would help, so. I'll get a quote on that when I get it, I'll just um PDF it to all you guys.
That'd be great, make sure Clarissa gets it, and if we have it ready for the twenty-seventh, we'll do it then, um is it a contract or is it just a monthly payment?
It's probably a contract, I don't know what determine how long you have to pay for it, I'll find all that out, I mean, I didn't get a chance um to speak to voting in depth about it today.
Okay. Okay. It's fantastic, so.
So we can get that up and running and we can add that right to the handbook, because most handbooks do have chat for Employee Assistance Program, so.
So, I can, I can meet with you sometime, we can talk about this too, you know, it's been a bit a long time, um.
Yep.
Years ago, the village offered, and I think it was in conjunction with the Rescue Squad, we were all at one time CPR certified, all of the village's employees, you know, to to help out with the, you know, if some, something was needed.
Yeah, if there's a disaster or some.
Yeah, we all, we all, we all took the course, we're all, I mean, we're talking fifteen years ago, you know, but we were all CPR certified, we went to, and first aid responder certified, we all went to, you know, we we took Sundays and went, Bill Gayle taught us all, so.
And there's, I know no shortage of people that are CPR instructors, obviously, and they have, some of them have actual training centers, I could find out what they wanted um cost-wise to do a class for us, or what have you.
There's nobody in Tom Red Cross certified, I used to be.
There's a few people.
They'll do that in your house, a hundred and twenty bucks a year.
Yeah, but. Yeah, yeah, but it's not.
That's official, that's official.
We all went, we all went, I mean, like, we did a couple Sundays and went, and like I said, Bill Gayle, you know, we did the CPR stuff with the dummies and the first aid stuff.
It's, right, so it's the access to the dummies.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the problem for, cause well, before.
There's a bunch of dummies in the village.
I'm bummed.
We'll just go grab some, and if we do a few compressions and break some ribs. Uh.
Got a bunch of them, we're good.
So yeah, I know, years, years ago.
Kenny, go move that woodpile.
Oh, CPR basic first aid classes, you could, you could almost do one a week, but the dummies today, some of the requirements, um the dummies are very expensive, they're not, even like the old hills where you had this. Saying they had a spring in it, now it's. Resuscitation Annie, it was Resuscitation Annie, and there's Resuscitation Baby Fanny, or whatever it was. I just went to a meeting yesterday, the lady goes, just move, she can use my office, just move the baby, but she kinda go in there, go in there, she's Resuscitation Annie, so, anyway. Um, the newer ones were, cause we have to prove like strength and depth, they actually record everything, also very, very expensive, so a lot of the places they give it on a more local level, found it very financially problematic to continue to do, or they have to maintain it or what have you, so.
Wow.
Um, but I can certainly find, that's not a bad idea, and in training, I think you guys have an A D here, right?
Yeah. Yup.
Are you on the A D here?
No, you're sure. I'm sure.
One of the other.
The, 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 even if we did have a, the, the.
Dan, remind me to talk to the school, because I know that they've done CPR training, there may be some folks there who would be willing to be part of it here. And that may connect us with some resources too.
Yeah. Yeah, especially in this, I mean, I don't know who has, or has a training center around, has a, kind of, at scale also. So the Rescue Squad, they have one, but you, you don't actually really need it at scale, right?
Yeah.
Um, so I, I can run that one, if.
Alright.
May not be a bad idea, but go to A D here.
I'm gonna say with any of the, I mean, you know, I'll be, questions.
Yeah, because there's, yeah.
Anything else?
When I'm done, I'll feel very, um, let's have a convo or something. I just had a question, um, I don't want to discuss this, are we working on changing newspapers, foundations?
That'll be in our organizational meeting.
Oh, okay.
And yes. Yes. Right now, we're basically duplicating anything we would normally put in the Eastwood Press, we're also making sure the Eagle posts it. Um, so, yes, we're, uh, that will be in the, in the next organizational meeting, which weather impending, weather storms, if they avoid us, we'll have time to prepare for. My gosh.
We're done.
Yeah, we're done for the year. Alright, anything else, sir?
That is it.
Thank you, Bobby Ryan.
I have nothing.
Great, because I was gonna give you a thirty second limit, that's fantastic, well done. Um, I just have old business of ARPA fund status, but we've, I've had no time to do anything with anything else on it. Um, I'm gonna discuss this briefly when we talk about the water thing, so is there anything else you guys wanted to discuss ARPA wise right now?
I have Denise asked at the, uh.
I answered.
Parking study was on, I looked it up, she couldn't find the minutes.
I answered it, yes, it is definite, and I gotta get her copy of the minutes.
I signed it.
Oh, um, can I just, um, do I need to table this? I mean, it's just kind of a generic thing, it's all, alright, we'll move on. We've already done the first item of new business, so that is done. Um, did we ever close the public hearing? Cheevers.
No, we didn't.
Uh, we have the public hearing open for local law number five, does anyone else wanna speak about local law number five? Propose local law. Looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Thank you, Doug and Bobby Decker. Further discussion? Do we, we vote on closing a public hearing, or we just do it? Alright, I don't think, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, oppose or abstentions? Okay, um, with local law development, now that it's gone through the public hearing, we have the ability to officially enact and pass local law, is that what the board is looking to do?
Yes.
Alright, so we have a resolution provided, thank you, Elena. This is the resolution, uh, enacting a local law to add a loading and unloading zone in the Village of Huesk Falls. I'm gonna skip the whereas clauses and go right to the now therefore be it resolve, that this village board does hereby adopt and enact a local law to be known as Local Law Number Five as follows, and it is listed down through here as we've been over. Looking for a trustee, you offer the resolution and second it.
Awesome.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Dan, for the second. Further discussion? As with all local laws, we will do a roll call vote. Clarissa?
Okay, uh, trustee, you should.
Yeah.
Uh, trustee Malley's accident.
He's the.
Uh, trustee Alter?
Yup.
Trustee Decker?
Yup.
Trustee Sauer?
Yes.
Uh, deputy mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And mayor Allen.
I'm yes. Okay, so local law number five, the fifth local law of twenty twenty-three is fully adopted. That will be officially sent to the Department of State and available on the Department of Web State, Department of State website for all of your experiences. What is that? Pressure thing, alright, whatever, it's a compressor. Okay. Uh, water treatment plants, uh, trustees, you have a packet that's on the front, I think says Saratoga Networking Networks LLC, this one right here. Um, for the water plant work, we need to move, uh, some panels and equipment that's on there. There's two parts to it, the first is we have three electrical quotes, uh, in front of us. The second one is a specialized service quote through Saratoga Networking, and that's Mark Road, who does all of the networking and electronic stuff, or not, not electronic, networking and computer specific stuff up there at the water plant. So as per our procurement policy, we just need to approve that quotes, um, because it's a specialized service, we only need the one. Um, but the three quotes from J A Bradley's and Sons is nine thousand five hundred dollars, which is low quotes. C K M Electrical Services came in at thirteen thousand six hundred.
Yeah, Bradley's is seven five fifty in this, uh, fall time.
What's that?
Bradley's.
You're looking at, you're looking at the shoe line, son.
Yeah, and the third one is Shane Hathaway, um, and he came in at nineteen thousand eight hundred. Uh, so it was Jim Herbert's recommendation, I'm assuming Kenny would agree with this, that the board goes with, uh, awarding the quote to, and the work to J A Bradley and Sons, is that it?
Yeah.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve, uh, the proposal from J A Bradley and Sons to set up the new fall screen control panel in the wastewater treatment plants.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, I'm gonna give it to Dan, to Roseanne, and Bobby Decker second. Uh, further discussion?
Did they say how long?
How long you wanna shave?
Well, the pricing's good for ten days, but, um, I think. I think the parts are mostly already here, because that's their mark. Um, they're just in the sense of doing the work, and then Mark also has his own follow-up work to do. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose or abstentions? Alright, and let the record reflect that we did go with the lowest bid there. Uh, great, and do we need to approve the work for, um, Saratoga Networks and Mark Rhodey? Specialized service for procurement policy, so it's, it exceeds, it's eight thousand dollars.
I think it's ten, right?
Well, it's a specialized service, so.
Doesn't hurt for us to do it.
Uh, it doesn't hurt for us to approve it, so let's just, um, so I'm looking for motion to, thank you, to do, uh, approve the work, thank you, that's Doug and Bobby Decker. This will be the Saratoga Networks LLC work, that's the, the top quote, which is the specific to the networking computer one. Alright, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose or abstentions? Alright, that carries. Can you tell Jim we, we, uh, gave the thumbs up on the work tomorrow, and he can start working on it? That's, that's probably fair. Alright, um, we have, uh, through collective bargaining between the village and the C S E A Union, our D P W employees. Uh, we have a resolution, uh, to put forward for the board. This comes from, let me get it here. I'm just gonna actually read the whole thing, this real quickly. This is a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the Village of Huesk Falls and the Department of Public Utilities Unit, C S E A. I'll, I'll summarize. Whereas the Village of Huesk Falls and the Civil Service Employees Association, uh, which is C A C, which is based with the union, are parties to collective bargaining agreement that ran from June of twenty eighteen through May of twenty twenty-three. Whereas representatives of the Village of Huesk Falls and the union have negotiated terms and conditions for a successor collective bargaining agreement resulting in a memorandum of agreement, M O A. Uh, and whereas, uh, the board of trust, uh, trustees have reviewed the terms and conditions in such memorandum, uh, of agreement pertaining to a successor collective bargaining agreement by and between the Village of Huesk Falls and the union, and find such terms and conditions to be in the overall public interest of the Village of Huesk Falls and supports the approval thereof. And whereas the union, already, has unanimously approved the successor collective bargaining agreement by and between the Village of Huesk Falls, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesk Falls in regular session, newly convened as follows. One, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huesk Falls hereby approves the terms and conditions of the memorandum of agreement dated August tenth, twenty twenty-three, by and between the Village of Huesk Falls and the Civil Service Employees Association, et cetera, et cetera, of the Village of Huesk Falls, and further hereby authorizes the mayor of the Village of Huesk Falls to execute any and all documents necessary to incorporate such terms and conditions into a successor collective bargaining group between the Village of Huesk Falls and the union for the term of June one, twenty twenty-three through May first of twenty twenty-eight. So first off, I'm looking for someone to offer the resolution, Bobby Ryan, and a second. Alright, uh, it could be, alright, we'll give it to, uh, to Doug there, although Deb was, was, was eager. Any discussion?
Thanks, you guys, for doing all that.
Yup, if there's any detailed questions that would require us to move into executive session, because it's a personnel matter, but otherwise we would vote on it. We will in a minute. Any questions? We're ready to move forward with the vote? Sure, sure, sure.
The part about the entire development.
There's a note at the bottom, Dan, at the last.
Second to last page, page seven. I think.
Where are you looking from? The term of honor. The handwritten section. Oh.
It's the single asterisk part.
I, I, so I, my, 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 I stopped at the signature line, as normally is, that's the end of it, okay.
Yup. Yup. Alright.
You thought, you told me in the meeting, at this point in the line, that we need to get a contract with Samantha Graves?
I thought we already approved that.
Approved that we don't have a contract.
Oh, we'll come back to that in a minute, so we'll finish this off. Any other discussion? Alright, now, now we'll do the roll call vote.
Okay, uh, trustee Shaddick?
Yeah.
Okay, um, trustee Malley's accident, trustee Alter?
Yup.
Uh, trustee Decker?
Yup.
Trustee Sauer?
Yes.
Deputy, uh, mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes. Please tell your guys, very excited, thank you, and again, thank you, um, thank you guys for all of your involvement with that. Um, alright, so.
Don't call me for a company.
Um, Doug, we need to get a contract from her to approve, is that what you're saying?
We need to get that contract for, I think we just up, you know, just redate the last contract we had.
So this is for Samantha Graves, who's writing the New York Forward Grant application, which we had done last year as well. I think we just approved the mayor to. We can, give me just one moment, and I'll try to find that. I think what we had done, we did, we had done, listen to me. We did last year was we simply made a motion authorizing the payment of up to X amount of money to Samantha Graves for the work, and I think that's all we needed to do.
This was up to two thousand, so we already did that.
Yeah, we've done that, I don't, I don't think we need to do anything else, right? We have not.
No, she just admits an emergency.
Yup, so she'll, so, okay, so that's covered. Uh, trustees, is there anything else needs to happen?
Yeah, I just have one question.
Yeah.
Kenny and Mark, um, you did an inspection on the water lines or whatever at the country club, Mark. He, wasn't it brought up that he was gonna be putting a pit in, a, a meter pit?
I heard that, I haven't, I think Jim was, you know, kind of assisting with that, with something, please, that happened.
Okay.
So, there's two issues with that, that's the first one, the second one is the, the sewer, but no sewer line, or something weird like that. So we'll have to get that sort of memorialized in some sort of agreement between them, and we'll have to approve that.
Oh, the current sewer bill, we have to adjust that, that's right, the water and sort of like.
Yes, and. Do you know about that one, Elena?
I think there's maybe so one.
Alright, I'll, we'll, we'll fill you in, can you just, um, put on the note for the next meeting, um, uh, country club water and sewer? That'll be enough for me to remember. Alright, anything else?